The special council meeting of June 5th is now called to order. Several council members have requested a meeting, so at this time it's recommended council enter into executive session to consider the appointment, employment, discipline, promotion, or compensation of a public employee. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Forrest and a second by Councilwoman Dugan to go into executive session. Call roll.
Point of order, Your Honor. I would like to ask, in reference to City Section 220.01E, Emergency Meetings, which this was called under, it reads in part that the Order of Business of the Emergency Meetings shall be transacted in an order to be fixed by the mayor unless council by majority vote suspends the rule and changes the order. And my request is, obviously, I know that there are several council members, including myself, who are proponents of transparency and open government, and I know that Council Member Avalotus Weaver communicated in an email just this past Friday to all of council that it's "unfair and biased to limit public comment and discussion from interested parties", end quote. And that was related to the special meeting we had on Monday night on a zoning matter. And we allowed public comment during that meeting even though it is not a public hearing and is not permitted. I also believe Councilman, or Councilmember Dugan is also a big proponent of public input as she has shared this meeting notice as a public meeting all over social media the past 24 hours, so I would assume that she has no problem hearing from the public as well. So my question for council would be, I'm making a motion that we allow public participation for all these residents, business owners, and/or city employees who have chosen to attend a public meeting tonight instead of us going into executive session and causing them disruption into their lives this evening while they wait for us to emerge from executive session. So that is my motion, is that we allow public comments prior to recessing into executive session.
That will be the will of council.
This is Mayor?
No.
I'd like to speak before you go into executive session.
Well, this time, that's fine.
I'll second that.
Just as a point of order, it's not an emergency meeting, it's a special meeting. It was specifically listed as a special meeting. Emergency meetings are meetings between 12 hours and 24 hours, and this had more than 24 hours' notice, but nonetheless, there is a motion and a second, so I assume you want me to call roll.
Sure.
Councilmember Dugan?
No.
Councilmember Lewis?
Pardon me, which, which motion are we voting on?
To allow public comment.
To hold the meeting out here and have public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just realized, we did have a motion, we have two motions. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Yeah, we would need a withdrawal of the first motion to consider the second motion.
And the motion is to have public comment, not to have the meeting out here and then going into executive?
No, no, no. I mean, the matter that I believe wants to be addressed should be in executive session. My motion is to have the hearing of the public prior to us recessing into executive session, which could be ours, and not tie up all these people's time who have obviously made an effort to be here for a reason tonight. So that's my, my request is that we have a public, comments from publics, or interested citizens or the public prior to going into executive session.
As a point of order, Councilmember Forrest would need to withdraw the motion, or Councilmember Dugan would need to withdraw the second to take care of that first motion before we technically can move to the second motion.
We have to reverse the order.
Yes.
Yes.
Are you withdrawing?
No, you are. I'm withdrawing.
I second this. You made the motion. Yes.
Okay, so we have a first and a second to withdraw.
To withdraw. So now we have a motion from Mr. Folic for the, allowing the pub to amend the rules to allow public speaking.
Speaking prior to...
And who was the second? I'm sorry.
Vice Mayor Blixley.
I was.
This is the motion to allow public, public comment. Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Councilmember Forrest?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blixley?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. So if anyone would like to make a comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and your comment. And due to the size, we will be limiting all comments to five minutes.
I prepared a really long speech. John Wheeler, that's my address, 1019 Kenbrook Drive. Obviously, I don't know why we're here because it wasn't specifically stated, but I heard a rumor that it is due to the possible unemployment of someone named Dan Went. Dan Went is probably the best city manager we have ever had since Jeff Hoagland, and given a few more years, he may actually show Mr. Hoagland up, you know, he's still living here. But what I want to point out is, we've spent eight, nine years dragging around with other city managers that were just here just kind of getting the job done, not actually excelling or shining anywhere. As a business owner and a person who's involved in lots of things in the city that requires coordination between the city and the schools and the chamber and all of the other things that I do, Dan has been a huge breath of fresh air. He's easy to work with, he's easy to talk to, he's easy to get with. I mean, he moved up here, he moved his whole family up here, and his wife is now part of some of the organizations in our community. He is committed to Van Dalia. And you guys have all been part of the things that he's brought to this community, the new grants that we're getting, that we were not getting under other city managers, the positive changes, the comments that the council members have even made about how we are making, we're striving and we're hitting our goals and we are improving the way our city runs. And I'm not 100% sure what's going on behind the scenes. I don't see any problem with Mr. Went's performance. I actually think it's refreshing. But I will say this, I am comfortable with Mr. Went in his position, and if the city council decides that Mr. Went should not be in that position, then I question the people that are on the city council, if they deserve to be there or they need to be replaced by people who have the same type of interests. Mr. Went does a good job, and I think the city council needs to really think about that before we let any potential personal issues get in the way. And again, I'm not sure what's going on, and I'm hoping that you guys as a council will share that at the end of the meeting so that we know this is put to bed. But my vote is Mr. Went is one of the best things that's happened to this city, and if he's not here, then I think we need a change in leadership to get him back.
Thank you.
Bob Wolf, 1005 Woodland Meadows. And I kind of go along with what the gentleman just said. I'm not sure what's going on either. But I did see an article in today's paper that a lot of people do know what's going on, at least as far as Mr. Went's performance. And he's in the top 40 of the under 40. He's received accolades from numerous organizations due to his performance and his ability to get the job done. I'm not sure how to relate to you guys, but I can relate how I relate, which is as a business. And I look at it as a board of directors, a CEO, and a president. You guys formulate a plan, you have a course of action you need to be carried out, and you tell him to do it. And he does it to the best of his ability, or reports back and says it can't be done. And everything I've seen about this gentleman is, he gets the job done for you folks. I think he's, he does a lot for you compared to any other city manager since 1987 that I'm aware of. I didn't know Mr. Hoagland, but I do know this guy. He's like an Energizer Bunny, and he just keeps going and going and going. And stop and think about it, he's got to satisfy every one of you. And the last count, we have a little over 15,000 people living in this. It's like 15,000 shareholders that all think they can do the job better than any of you can, and they're happy to share it with you whenever they think that, too. So put yourself in his position, he's trying to juggle all those balls, and I think he does an admirable job of accomplishing it. And one last thing, if we do decide to remove Mr. Went from his position, and we have to advertise for another person to fill that job, and they look at the credentials that Mr. Went has and the performance that he's delivered while he was here, anybody with half a brain is going to say, "I don't want to touch that with a 10-foot pole." So that means we're going to be feeding at the bottom of the trough when it comes to getting a viable candidate to replace him. And I, I don't think that candidate exists, at least any from, from any of I see. Anybody can be replaced, but I don't think we need to do that. But that's up to you folks. Hopefully, you'll make a good decision based on what's best for the city and not any personal animosities or issues of that kind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lenny Manza, 1117 Ronald Street. I wasn't planning on even coming up here, but I had a bill to pay, so I dropped it off and came in. And I just wanted to say, I don't, as a retired history teacher, I don't pretend to know all the intricacies of running a government, because I was on the history side of it. But I do know that I've worked very closely with Mr. Went over the last few years because I'm currently the chairman of the Parks and Rec Citizen Advisory Board. And of course, I'm prejudiced, but I think the Parks and Recreation, bar none, is one of the best in the country. And he has done a tremendous job. He listens to us. I don't always agree, and he doesn't always agree with me on not only Parks and Rec but other things, but I just wanted to put my two cents in that I think, I don't even know where this meeting came from, all of a sudden it came out of nowhere, and as I said, I don't agree with every single thing any one of you has done, but I'm very proud to be here and support him and support of our city. He's done a good, a lot of good for our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mike Hale. I live at 9261 Dogleg Road. I've known Dan for three or four years now, and I know a lot of you know what's going on with the west side of town with all the infrastructure that's been happening lately, all the things we've had to deal with the last three or four years, you know, fighting certain businesses that wanted to come to town. I'm one person out there in one house, but every time I've wanted to talk to Dan about the issues, he's been available. He's made time for phone calls, he's made time to meet me personally, and I felt like he's listened to everything I've had to say. And while I don't agree with everything that Dan has done and the city has done, I respect the fact that he listened. And I just want to say, you know, Dan's a good guy. He's a good city manager. He cares about this place. I've lived here all my life, and, you know, the last 10 or 15 years, we've seen just this rotation of people in his position. And to me, Dan is, you know, he's brought his family here, he has roots in this city. He's involved in this city. And, you know, to somebody like me, it makes a big difference in knowing that if I have an issue, I can call him. You know, I can call his office, and he'll make the time to speak with me. You know, to me, that deserves a lot of respect, and I hope you all consider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Rick Washburn, 94 East Van Lake Drive, and I'm here also to express my support for the continued employment of Dan Went, the city manager of Van Dalia. I share these thoughts as a resident of Van Dalia, as a faith leader in our community, and as a parent who's actively involved in the Van Dalia Butler City School District. I've known Dan for the past three years or so, have interacted with him at various levels and in various capacities, and I've spent personal time with him, gotten to hear some of his personal story and his journey and the things that motivate him, that drive him in life and in his service to others and to make a difference in things that really matter, not just here locally, but cross-culturally and internationally. And he has an incredible, strong work ethic, and pretty much has already been mentioned, it never stops. And I don't know a lot of details, as mentioned, behind the scenes, and I want to be careful not to make any claims that aren't accurate, but I do know that he inherited a difficult situation when he was hired with significant problems and challenges that would require courageous, bold, and creative leadership. And he didn't shy away from the challenges, but he has faithfully sought options and solutions and possibilities to present to you as a city council for approval and for decisions, and he successfully sought out millions of dollars in grant money for the city of Van Dalia for so many of these projects. And I've been at several meetings with the Van Dalia Chamber of Commerce, and he's been there updating business leaders on what's going on in the city, things that are in the works, and how they're trying to improve the community in various ways. He's been a big part of a project we partnered with, with bringing Habitat for Humanity home to our city and a first of its kind here, and I was excited. When my wife began, became more involved in helping out the theater department at Butler High School, seeking support from the city and from business community leaders, Dan was always ready to do anything to support our students, even providing venues for fundraising events and making helpful suggestions, and even supporting through the Rotary Club in so many different ways. And as an outside observer, it seemed to me that he has gone above and beyond to carry out the agenda and the policies established by the Van Dalia City Council. And I believe if the city's agenda needs to change, if the city's policies on any matter need to change, if there's a new direction the city council would like to pursue in the future, then I would encourage the city council to vote on those decisions and those policy changes, knowing that Dan Went will give his absolute best to execute the city council's decisions and priorities. And I can't imagine anyone else who can bring more skill, more diligence, more follow-through to this position than Dan Went does. And I believe terminating his employment would be a serious mistake. I think it'd be a great loss to our community, and I believe we need more people like Dan Went in community leadership, not less. And if he at any point has ever proven to do anything illegal or unethical as city manager, then I think that decision would be pretty straightforward. But otherwise, I would urge the city council to keep Dan Went as current position as city manager. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Amber Holloway, 136 High Street, Dayton, Ohio. Good afternoon, Mayor Herbst and esteemed members of the city council. It's a pleasure to stand here before you this evening to share a little bit about my experience in working for Dan Went. As you know, I was, I worked for the city of Van Dalia for almost nine years, first as the city planner, starting in 2015, and then as assistant city manager. And, you know, I feel, and I say all of the time, how lucky and fortunate Van Dalia is to have such a great team. Truly, I am confident that I would not be where I am today had I not had the experiences and the growth opportunities that were afforded to me within this organization. So I want to say thank you for that. But I had the privilege of working for Dan for almost three years. He has unparalleled energy. I'm sure you all have seen that. He is one of the most charismatic and people-centric leaders that I have ever known. He truly cares about his team, and he really cares about the city of Van Dalia. He's done everything possible to integrate himself into the community, to be present, to get to know folks, and to deliver on the promises that he makes to people. And that includes in the community as well as the team that he leads. Further, you know, he is invested in the city's success, but when he, you know, and I think that it's important to talk about the team and say that everyone here before Dan was really invested in the city's success. But when Dan came to the city in 2021, he really pushed us all to be better, to think more strategically, and to share a collective vision. That vision that was ultimately adopted in the policy goals, and I think, you know, I, I hope that council sees and saw a ripple effect throughout the organization and the ability of staff to then tie each and everything that we were doing to a purpose and a collective vision. And I think that that's really important in local government. Since starting as Van Dalia city manager in 2021, Dan has been named the Van Dalia Butler Chamber of Commerce Businessperson of the Year, a Dayton Business Journal 40 Under 40, a Leadership Ohio Fellow. He has also raised more than $16 million in external grants and funding to make strategic investments in the city. What sits Dan apart is not just his strategic acumen, but also his exceptional ability to connect with people. He led with empathy and respect, always taking the time to listen and understand his team's perspectives. This fostered an environment where we all felt valued and motivated to give our best every single day. In the field of professional management, Dan is recognized as one of the best of the best. He's an ICMA credentialed manager, and he was recognized earlier this year with the Distinguished Early Career Award from the Ohio City and County Management Association. When I say all eyes are on Van Dalia and Dan, I mean all eyes in the profession are on Van Dalia and Dan because of the work that's being done here. Under his guidance, I feel that we were able to really move the needle in a way that we hadn't been before. We were making strides. His encouragement and belief in our abilities turned our obstacles into opportunities. He supported us every step of the way by celebrating our successes and stood by us during any setbacks. This is someone that genuinely cares about this community and his team. I am proud to know him, I am proud to call him a mentor. I am exceptionally happy that I had the opportunity to serve this community alongside him. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Chris Kloganoff, 790 Bolton Abbey. First, I think that's a hard one to follow, but I wanted to come up and just voice my support for Dan, both as a city manager and as a friend. I think from my three years of living here, I've seen lots of changes, and I think they've all been positive. I also wanted to just echo what a lot of the other people have said, that I find it a little concerning that a lot of people are still questioning why we're even here, and I appreciate the, the people that have spoke up and asked, and allowed the people that did show up the chance to talk today. And I think it's very important for everybody to be able to just be able to voice their opinions and to be able to hear back and forth on like what some of the issues are. And I think from a, a person that doesn't come to these meetings a lot, it's very, both concerning and, and, and good to see that people do have a chance to talk. So I'm just glad we had a chance to discuss everything today. I hope we can continue discussion versus what the other alternative would have been. Thank you. Thank you. I'd like to mention, if you have your cellphone near that microphone, that's what's making the scratchy noise of...
Thanks, Rick.
Or a microphone up here, or a cellphone. Make sure your cellphones are away from your mic.
Mayor, council, thanks for the opportunity to speak. I'm Rudy Wells, I live at 6245 Brantford Road, Butler Township. But my parents moved here when I was one, and I grew up here, and I really consider Van Dalia my hometown, for sure. I've been with the city of Van Dalia Parks and Rec Department for 26, little over 26 years. I've been the facility superintendent for the past little over 20 years, and I was, I just wanted to share some of our, my experience, my personal experience with the city over the years. You know, going back many years, our parks economy wasn't very good, and, and parks, when we started out, we had a superintendent and assistant superintendent, and those things dissolved. And we did a lot without capital money for quite a few years. We were basically operating and keeping things going and not doing a lot of infrastructure repairs and those kind of things. And, you know, I had, as things improved, capital got better, I got busier. I was strongly thinking that I needed some help in supervision, in assistant supervision to help us run our department. And I was told, you know, in budget meetings, understood, but there's nothing we can do about that. And so when Mr. Went came, things changed. I echo what Amber said about the city and our direction. And when Dan came to our garage and, and visited our garage and took a look, and one of the things he said to me, you know, this is very organized, I like the way this is set up, and I appreciated that, that made me feel good. You know, an organized work area is an efficient work area, we can get things done, and, and I appreciated him knowing, noticing that. And he's always been interested in what we do out at Parks, and I can tell you from past experience, that's not always been the case with a city manager. He's come to our garage and spoke to the guys, and he comes, usually he comes at 7:00 if he's got something to talk to about, and I think he does that so he just doesn't disrupt our day, so everybody's there, everybody can hear what needs to be heard, and then go out and do the workday rather than coming in midday or whatever's convenient for him and, and all of us having to come back to the garage because we go everywhere in the city. We take care of buildings and parks, so we're all over the place. So I, I never really thought about that, but I think that's why he does that, so he's keeping us as efficient as possible. We've had, you know, the citywide specific goals and our department goals, we didn't have a lot of that before. And, you know, when I talk to our guys and we're working on things and we're looking at the citywide policy goals and our department goals, we've got direction and, you know, we've got focus. And, and Dan has always been in tune, I don't know how he does it, he's always been in tune to kind of everything around. When he first got here, he texted me and said, "Hey, we need to do something. We take care of Poplar Hill Cemetery as far as some of the maintenance there." And he said, "The signs out front, the plastic entryway signs, you know, they need cleaned up." And I knew that, I saw that, every time I went by there, I saw that, we need to do that, and, and that told me he, you know, he's on it, he notices everything, he wants things to look good. And we've always, we've always strived for that. And with him working through the process, with the Parks and Rec Master Plan, and increasing our staffing by three full-time people, that has been unbelievably huge for us. Things that we had on our list for a long, long time, we just couldn't get to, and we, we rely heavily on seasonals. But we've done a lot of things with those guys, and, you know, they're new and they're learning things, but in case in point, we were down to Clubhouse the other day and cleaning the patio and power washing the carpet and the patio and doing cleaning down there that we had never got a chance to do. We would just try to hit it once in a while, and, and those employees have, have allowed us to do so much to make things nicer for the city. And all the projects that we've been involved with, the infrastructure, we worked very hard on that, and, and we needed that for a long time, and Mr. Went directed that, made that happen. We, Steve, our director, excellent support and excellent direction from Steve, and we've had, you know, good success as a Parks Department, but that wasn't happening. Dan put that forward, made that happen for us, and it was much needed, things that are not seen, but things that are needed to keep our infrastructure strong and viable. The beautification of the city, you know, the landscape out front here is a result of Mr. Went because we're busy, we didn't have time to get to it, I knew that needed to be done, so we, we got a contractor and had that done, and those are things that, you know, we were able to do that we weren't, weren't able to do before. I want to mention, we had our disaster at the Justice Center with a sprinkler break on Christmas Day a couple years ago, and that night, Dan was there. And I was up there the next couple weeks at different hours, at different times. I'd, I'd be in the building and before 7:00 in the morning, and there's Dan going through, making sure things are happening, making sure we're doing things, and I think, I know he has confidence in me, but he, he wants to make sure the city is, is, you know... you know, getting things done that need to be done, and I appreciate that. You know, we have the comprehensive facility plan now that will help guide us through our long-term building infrastructure needs. I'll mention Castle Hills Pool. You probably all know that we had problems down there with patrons a few years ago. And Mr. Went was instrumental in giving us the guidance to make that work. And my wife was just telling me today, she has a friend that's going to join the pool, get a pool pass, because she knows things have gotten better. And my, like I said, I grew up here, my wife grew up here, we swam in that pool when it was built. And she said, you know, when she started going last year, she didn't want to go before, and she started going last year with a couple of her old friends, and she said, this is like the old days, when we were down there not having any kind of problems with those kind of things. So I give Dan the credit for that. And like Amber said, our staff, the fellow staff of the city, they want to support his efforts because in my mind, he truly, truly cares about the city and our employees. He knows my kids' names. He asks how they're doing. My son's in the Army. He asks what Daniel's doing in the Army. I mean, it's unbelievable to me. I just really appreciate being a part of this city and this, the workforce for the city. So I appreciate your time, and I thank you.
Please, let's remember the five minutes.
My name's Liz Chiketti, and I live at seven ninety Bolton Abbey Lane. What I want to say is that it's very clear that there are a lot of people here that support Dan and the work that he's doing for our community and the community member that he is. Not only is he doing a great job as the city manager, but we're hearing about all the accolades he's receiving in the city of Dayton, which means the surrounding suburbs, the city themselves are seeing the great work that he's doing. My concern as a resident is the lack of transparency I feel that we're receiving from council. In less than twenty-four hours, we received a notice of an emergency meeting, and everybody here dropped what they were doing to support Dan out of concern. Nobody knows why we're here, just that there is concern from the council. If Dan himself is not a good enough city manager for our council, my concern is who's going to be a good enough city manager? So for the next ten, fifteen, twenty years, are we just going to be on a hamster wheel every three years, being here, questioning our city manager? He was hired for a reason, and we need to stand behind why he was hired and give him a chance to prove himself for this city. I've been here for three years. In those three years, my children can play on playgrounds that aren't going to cut them and make me have to take them to the doctor for a tetanus shot. My kids can go and play outside. We have police that are surveying our neighborhood. We have streets that are being cleaned effectively when it snows and ice storms. I am very thrilled with the three years that I have been in Vandelia, and I want to continue to see that. So before we make decisions, we need to really think about what the future is and what is good enough for Vandelia if Dan Went is not.
Don Hutchison, one oh five eight Bristol Drive. Good evening, Council. Good evening, Mayor. I've come up here and talked on many things throughout the years with Ms. Setser, Mr. Loy, Cruzey, Anderson, Hoagland. I've learned that that's how you get things done, by properly choosing your words and going about it in the right way. About fifty-four years ago, John Follett here, I disrespected his workplace one time. And I've learned since then to handle things in a different manner. Now, I come in here, and many of my other fellow citizens spoke in regards to our difference to warehouses. And I never heard anything in other times I spoke back about other city managers and February of 2022, I had the pleasure, and actually the displeasure, to be at my best friend's house and be apprised that shortly after one of the meetings in regards to the warehouse in January of 2022, that a former head of one of the departments here at the city of Vandelia was approached by Mr. Went, who had foul comment and derogatory statements in regards to my ability to come up here and speak as a citizen for issues that affect my fellow citizens. I am going to tell you another little story. That night, that particular night, and there was other people who can attest, I haven't touched a drop of liquor or beer or anything due to the fact of I don't want that to lead me to try to go settle things in the wrong way. And I wonder, what exactly did Mr. Went hope to achieve by degrading my ability to come up here as a citizen and speak and belittle my vocabulary? Would you like to speak on that, sir?
Mr. Hutchison, that's not the time or place for this right now, I'm sorry.
Well, like I said, I'm not here to cause any trouble. I'm here to exercise my right as a citizen. Now, they're up here talking accolades of this and that sort, of how the integrity of this man is unbesmirched. But I want you to understand that there are even people here in this room tonight that can attest the fact that they were told by that man, my best friend, and my sons have been apprised of this language this man used against their father to try to protect this area in which they live. So when you're making a decision for somebody who you feel that his integrity is of such unbesmirchable background, understand that there are other things that are not so transparent in their actions. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Jared Hill, thirty-nine fifty-five Holmesburg, Sampson Ridge, Greenville, Ohio. I've been with the city for twenty-eight years. I work in building maintenance, been in building maintenance the whole time. It's very exciting at this time. Your infrastructure of your pools, your buildings, everything needed some assistance. And I put turkey pans under leaks on roofs. I just want to say from my aspect, it's exciting. It's great to see us get pool units that protect the citizens. I wanted to follow Rudy up on working with him the whole time too and respecting everything. On a personal note, Dan's done some things that I went through in my family, that he asked about my wife and things going on all the time. He's very compassionate towards me as an employee. But I think his goal, he cares about the infrastructure of all your buildings, your city. A lot of them were in need of a lot of help. And he's not said, no, if we bring something that's a safety issue up, he's really looking towards fixing that. Anything else? I just look at the Parks and Rec, building maintenance, what we do with the infrastructures in the city's facilities. He allows us to do our job to make it safe for all the citizens and provide for them in a great manner. I think he's, the master plan is a goal to keep things going in a good way. I don't have anything rude. I'm trying to just speak it from my heart. I appreciate you guys' time. Thanks for letting everybody make a comment, and thanks for letting me talk.
Thank you.
Jake Hazlitt, eight thirty-one Roxanna Drive. I just want to come to you as a citizen. You know, being raised here, grew up back on Foley and Brown School. I remember playing on the playgrounds that are still at Robinette now, had sand on it. I've talked to a few council members about it, you know. And also the park there at the rec center. You know, it was always the same. My kids played on it for a while. You know, now it's all brand new, and I'm thankful for that. I see my tax money being used in a good way. You know, I've also talked to other family members out there at the rec center. They've traveled from different cities just to come play on this playground. And I think it's money well spent. But like I said, I want to come to you as just a resident. You know, I'm okay spending more money on the water, you know? I mean, I know that sounds crazy to some people because that's money coming out of my pocket, but I know, again, that my tax money is going to the right place, going into infrastructure of water mains and sewer lines, sidewalks and curbs and streets. And I do think that is under Dan's leadership, you know, being very aggressive of going out and getting grants, you know, replacing water lines, working with, you know, the team now of getting ready to replace Ranch View and Moss View and tie onto streets back there behind McDonald's. That's a lot of water main that we're going to be replacing soon. I've worked in other cities where there's sixty to eighty water main breaks in one year. Sometimes it's seventeen in a month, could be, you know, just three in a week. You come here, and there's maybe fifteen in a whole year. And that's a huge compliment right there. And the reason why I bring that up is because Dan is very, he leads the team of, hey, let's go get grants. Let's be really adamant and try to figure out where's the bad spots in our city, and let's get them fixed. And so I really appreciate that. So I appreciate being a citizen. I love living in Vandelia. I love raising my kids here and sending my kids to Butler, and I love working here because I take great pride in what I do. And I think it's great working with this team and with Dan to make this place a better city, all the way from the parks. I'm excited for the splash pads at Robinette. You know, the rec center is going to get better, you know, with the playgrounds how it has been. So, yeah, I just want to back everybody that we're glad to be able to work for this team with Vandelia and with Dan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jack Froshauer, one one six zero zero Castle Road. Been here twenty-five years as a resident. And despite the fact that everyone is, good evening, Mayor and Council. Despite the fact that everyone has said how much Dan cares about Vandelia, I can assure you that people that live in the Heather Development, Castle Road, and all the areas surrounding the target spot where there was going to be a warehouse do not feel that he cares about Vandelia. The meetings with the planning group and then subsequent meetings with the developers, there was no evidence that Dan was on our side. That was primarily the residents shutting it down. We've had that problem before, and part of the problem is that Dan got here and he didn't familiarize himself with the neighborhoods, with the city. And right away, he wanted to make a big impression and bring in a developer or a developer that arrived that had been developing in his previous position. It doesn't matter where they came from. He should have, he should have worked on behalf of the citizens. There were, even when John Cruzey was here, there was an outline that came out very frequently that showed that the citizens were first, and below them were the city manager and the council. And we had that for a little while when Dan arrived, but I haven't seen it since. And I can assure you, if this wouldn't have been such short notice, there would have been plenty of people from that area, the two or three thousand that live in that area that are not in complete harmony with everybody's kind remarks. Now, I don't know how so many people discovered about it because it was really short notice. So I don't know if someone was inviting them to come, urging them to come. But the fact of the matter is that everybody in this city does not feel that way. And while some of the employees can say, this is great, man, we've got all these new employees. Well, I don't know where that money's coming from. And we really didn't get a good explanation a few weeks ago when suddenly Vandelia was in the news every single night because the city, the city schools were suing the city. That's embarrassing. Surely to goodness, a real hotshot city manager should have been able to work it out with the superintendent and then at least, at least be transparent to the citizens. Nobody ever had any idea what happened. It was just, okay, we've got it all taken care of, and we only owe them five million. Well, now, I happened to be garage sailing two or three weeks ago, and there's a seven-foot-tall Indian at the corner of a guy's garage in this city, and it's over in the Heather Development, and it happens to be Don Hutchinson. And he asked me if I knew how we were going to pay that five million dollars. And I said, I don't have any clue. Believe me, I was at every council meeting for fifteen years, speaking to stop the ideas of resurrecting that rail out through the countryside and all that. I don't want to have to advocate anymore, but this is just not being handled correctly. If we owe five million dollars to the schools, then I want to know how we're going to pay it back. And further to that end, what are we doing with this wild spending? There are people, one guy can say he doesn't care if the water has gone up. Well, there are a lot of people that are on social security. Surely to goodness, they should be taken into consideration. When this budget was dreamt up last fall and pushed through by a few people, it was just ludicrous. There was no provision to take care of the people's water. And Corey, you said it when you were campaigning, that you thought the residents had been, had paid too little for too long. Well, let me tell you something. Maybe they like cheap water. Maybe they like cheap water, and you wanted to represent them, so find out how to deliver cheap water. And we need to solve this situation with the schools, though. My goodness, people still wonder about it. We, and if it's, if it's the abatements are the problem, then I want to, I'm on, I've been on that committee for a long, long time on the Community Reinvestment Committee. And Amber knows this, we've got a warehouse that we made variances for that's on deer run that has not, there might be five cars there. I mean, they don't have any employees. So we got schnuckered on that deal. And if we gave them, if we gave them an abatement, then there's a problem. But somebody's got to be accountable for five million dollars. That's the big thing. And if the, if the council who works frequently with Dan Went saw a reason to call a special meeting to review what's going on, then I think they should, should reach some resolution. And maybe it's not as great as everybody's been saying.
Anyone else would like to make a comment?
Darren Davey, two thirteen Trumpet Drive, West Carrollton, a city employee and probably the guy that should be fixing that screen right now. I love the city. I love the people I work with and the hard work that goes into local government. I've worked for the city for nearly nineteen years. I've worked with five city managers, if you include the short time that Chief Knight was interim city manager. Since February first, two thousand twenty-one, when Dan Went was appointed as city manager, our departments have been challenged to do more for the citizens and businesses of Vandelia than any other city manager during my employment. From day one, Mr. Went has emphasized the need for transparency, the duty we have to provide citizens the best services, to be open and honest, and above all, to continuously improve our departments and the services we provide. Mr. Went has an amazing ability to see the big picture, to connect the dots between city services and the public, often requiring us to raise the bar within our own departments. Mr. Went gets excited when citizens get excited, which is something that has been missing in city leadership for quite a long time. When it comes to integrity and honesty, Mr. Went has consistently demanded the best from us and demonstrated it with each of his decisions. When it comes When it comes to meetings, meeting minutes, documents, et cetera, the city manager has always directed staff to publish the records quickly and to be transparent and open. When it comes to public records requests for things like documents or email, Mr. Wendt has never asked for anything other than the full account and the full release of records, never filtered, always the truth. But not everybody likes Dan, as we heard tonight. There are plenty of people that assume Mr. Wendt is anything other than honest, hardworking, and fair. But for those that work with him day after day, we know what a great job Dan Wendt is doing. I understand that Mr. Wendt's position is more than just a leader and a boss, and that it is his duty to serve as a steward to the city's resources, to money and services to the citizens of Vandelia. I have a limited understanding of what's going on tonight in the current situation, but I hope that the stewardship that he's shown to us is evident to city council. I don't know which of the city manager's job performance metric is being evaluated, but I hope that the council is diligent in getting the whole and complete truth, whatever that may be.
Connie Woods, 319 Crestdale. I had the privilege of serving with Dan for the four years that I served and worked for you on council. He brings, actually, he brings so much to the table and so many qualifications, as evidenced by the awards that I nominated him for, and I just, it was a pleasure to have someone and who refreshing, who understood the financial background, who understood bond ratings, who understood budgets, who understood the financial workings of this city. It's been a long time since we've had that in-depth of skill with our city manager. I also want to say that Dan and his wife Laura have committed to hosting an exchange student, an international student with Rotary for nine months starting this fall. That would be rather difficult if he didn't have any employment to do that. He's also, his wife volunteers in the community, doing so many things with the Food Pantry and other organizations. They've become such a part of this community beyond his employment that it's just evident that his heart is here and his mind is here. I also want to say that as a businessperson and owning a practice here in the city for the last 42 years and having many, many employees who've worked for me over this time, I have never treated an employee with a disrespect that this city manager has been treated with by several members of this council. And there are several people who have a personal vendetta against him, and I hope that you can get beyond that and look at the positive comments that have been said tonight about this gentleman. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Lucius Plant, 2330 Chevy at Hills Lane, Vandelia. I'm a Vandelia resident for about 21 years now. Looked at a lot of communities before I chose this community, and I've been happy being here. I think the thing that I want to say today is that I'm recently retired after a 40-year career at city, state, and regional level government. I worked on economic development projects for the last 30 years, including almost all of these up here. I had the opportunity to work under about four different top managers in different parts of this region, and through my career, I learned from them. The one thing that I came away with there was that where there was council, and there always was, the city manager was the paid professional operator and was afforded the opportunity to carry out some of the vision that the council had. Now, that wasn't always perfect, but through those 40 years, I don't think I saw once that they didn't work together to get through those tough times, if there were those tough times. I know Dan. I've met him when he came to the area. He's a very talented, young professional that I think is hard to come by these days. My career has been 30 years of talent acquisition, and I would say this, successful companies now understand that, and maybe always did, that you must acquire and develop your talent. Don't always go to the market looking for new to replace. It's a very difficult thing to find a top professional, and I think we want to make sure our community doesn't develop a reputation for not treating its top professionals with courtesy. So I would just ask you to make sure that you think of the investment that you're making. It's a good one. I think what we're here for all for the long term. I know we want things resolved immediately. It doesn't always work that way. But in the long run, I think I would ask you to support Dan Wendt here because I think he can get the job done. I see that. I see some of the same characteristics in him that I saw in the great managers before in this region. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Hello. It's the first time I've spoke like this before. So I have a little, Aaron Hathaway, 1577 Cambraun Court. I just wanted to show my support for Dan, both as a friend and it's a unique perspective where my son actually works out as a seasonal employee at the Parks and Rec Department, and my dad has been out there for 30 years, I think, working under Rudy at the Parks Department. So my dad hurt himself a couple of years ago, fell off a mower, ended up having metal rods put in his back, and it was pretty serious. And Dan would check in constantly, seeing how he was doing, checking with me. I'd run into him at the park, and he'd ask about my dad. I know after talking to my dad, he did the same thing with him. He'd call him and was very personable, very easily to approach and speak to. We had concerns and things like that, so I just wanted to just to say a little something in support of Dan. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? All right. It's recommended council enter into executive session for the consideration of an appointment of an employee discipline promotion or compensation of a public employee or official. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Dugan and a second by Councilwoman Farsh to go into executive session. Call the roll.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Follett?
Yes.
Councilmember Farsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotis Weaver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakesley?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0.
Just want to thank all those that came up to speak. In case you don't stay until the end of this evening, I appreciate you taking the time and coming out this evening. And I know not everyone is a public speaker, so thank you.
I've just been informed that Mr. Wendt would like to address council in executive session, so we're now going to return back to executive session and look back. City council and Mr. Wendt have reached an agreement where Mr. Wendt will tender his resignation pending the execution of a settlement agreement, and in the interim, Mr. Wendt will be on paid administrative leave, and Mr. Cron is appointed as acting city manager. Can I have a motion?
I'm sorry. The appointment, Mr. Cron, would be pending a vote from council, so we would need a motion for that.
Okay. Can I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Farsh and a second by Councilwoman Dugan. Call the roll.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Follett?
Yes.
Councilmember Farsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotis Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakesley?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. This meeting is adjourned?